Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford County Council. All proper notices were sent. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if you please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present except Alder Person Webb, who is absent and excused.
Thank you. We have before us a unanimous consent agenda?
For approval.
For approval by President Rosniak, seconded by Alder Person?
Kohler.
Yes, I did.
Kohler.
Motion by Alder Person Rosniak, seconded by Alder Person Kohler, approving the common council minutes of November 12th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I wouldn't want to call him if he didn't raise your hand.
No, I didn't. It was on a TV. You got it on film.
Okay. Any kind of questions, concerns, additions, subtractions? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next, communication. Shannon.
Notice is hereby given that an election to be held in the city of Hartford on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, the following officers are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. The term for mayor and alderpersons begins on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025. For the office of mayor, incumbent Timothy C. Maholic, for a term of three years. Alder Person District 1, Joseph Philip, three years. Alder Person District 2, Wayne Rosniak, three years. Alder Person District 3, Justin Webb, three years. Information concerning Aldermanic District boundaries may be obtained from the city clerk. 109 North Main Street, Hartford, Wisconsin, 53027. Notice is further given that the first day to circulate nomination papers is Sunday, December 1st, 2024, and the final day for filing nomination papers is 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, in the office of the city clerk. Nomination papers are available in the city clerk's office. If you intend to file a notification of non-candidacy, the deadline is December 27th, 2024, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much. With that, we're looking for appearances and citizen comments. Any of the citizens of the city of Hartford or business here in the city that has business in front of the council would is welcome to come up and speak their piece or tell us what a great job we're doing. Just come up to the podium and state your name and address. You get three glorious minutes. Second request, third request. Hearing none, we go to the mayor's report. The first one is with our neighbors to the east. I wanted to sincerely congratulate on behalf of the city of Hartford, the Slinger Oriole Football Team, Division II State Champions.
Owls.
Owls. Sorry.
Different bird.
Yeah, that's a different bird. Yeah, we were definitely, you know, maybe we wish it was the Orioles. That was a thing. But it was the Owls and the Owls did a phenomenal job. So again, our neighbors to the east, a sincere congratulations from Hartford. We're proud of you folks and you definitely have something to celebrate when it comes to Thanksgiving. So again, congratulations to the Slinger Owls. Okay. I just also wanted to bring up Thanksgiving weather. If you've been watching what's going to be happening, it's going to be kind of cold. Lot of craziness once you get south of here if you're going to be doing any traveling. So please be careful. We want all of our citizens to be safe and come back safe and sound from the weekend. But Friday, Saturday, the temperatures really drop. They drop to the low to mid twenties. It's going to be in the teens every night for over a week. The reminder is, because of something I did long ago in my past, don't put your champagne out in the garage if it's going to be in the teens because you could be rudely interrupted in the evening or at night when that sucker goes off. It really does let out a bang. Also, any type of your soda pops or anything that you have out there, make, excuse me, make sure you might want to bring it in at night so you have less of a mess to clean up. And of course, that means that if there is any precipitation, it doesn't look like there's going to be any, but just in case there is, that means it's going to be quite cold. Last part is the students. I know as I drive back and forth to the high school, I still don't believe how many students are very underdressed for the weather. You know, just no gloves, no hat, light coat. Please, because it's really going to drop, make sure that the students going to Hartford or any of the schools there, even some of the grade schools, make sure they're properly dressed up. Something to think about. Hats and gloves do come in handy when it's 19 degrees out. So that's all I have. With that, I go to Aldermanic requests. President Rosniak.
Yeah, I just want to extend a big thank you from all the residents on East Loop Street and that important alley that Tina and I and Justin dealt with. Everything is blacktopped. Everybody's happy and they're all very thankful.
Super. Thank you.
So thank you to everybody involved, whether it was Steve, Mayor, Engineering Department, Public Works, everybody was involved in that. Turned out fine.
Super. And which reminds me, I mentioned Thanksgiving, but I'm sure for myself, the president of our council and the entire council, a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving for all of our citizens here.
Thank you.
Alder Person Regan.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Curly.
The Police and Fire Commission met on November 13th and took the following actions. Confirmed Chief Burgard's appointments of the following applicants for the position of paid-on-call members with Hartford Fire and Rescue, all of which have successfully completed all pre-hire conditions and pending successful completion of their applicable probation periods and orientations. Zachary Schoen and Jason Finley as firefighters, Jordan Jones, Paige Dulkey, and Jonah Ashwell as EMTs. They also confirmed Chief McFarland's appointment of Dominic J. Casper to the position of police officer on or after January 1st, 2025, subject to successful completion of all pre-hire conditions. They welcomed all, welcome to all, including new officer Justin Vemis, who joined the police department from past service with the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department and prior to that with the Brown Deer Police Department. Finally, congratulations to the Hartford Water Utility and Hartford Electric Teams for their commitments to excellence over the years and for attaining debt-free status this past summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Savage.
I just kind of want to point out that it is deer season right now and they are running wild. So please be attentive so you can save your life or someone else's.
I know one that's not running anymore.
Yeah, show them the picture.
They're running crazy.
Show them the picture.
Go down out there.
Here, give me it. I'll show it.
Good God.
We're so proud. Oh, you're going to let me do it. Okay, we are so proud of our, the president of our common council. Look at this. I don't know if you can zoom in on it, but just a gorgeous 10-pointer that Wayne Rosniak. Look at that thing. Talk about something you want to mount. Yeah, that's just a beautiful, beautiful. I hope, good luck for all of those who are out from our wonderful city of Hartford that are trying to bag Bambi. Looks like you got a good one. So.
Thank you.
You betcha. Alder Person Kohler.
No, just to remind everybody that we're going to be coming close to the winter parking rules. So please pay attention to overnight parking out on the streets after, was it December 1st?
Thank you. And Alder Person Fulop.
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go to standing committee reports, finance and personnel. Chairman Rosniak.
Okay, three items tonight. Number one, discussion and consideration approving a Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage license for WT Entertainment LLC doing business as Whiskey Wednesdays. Shannon?
So WT Entertainment LLC DBA Whiskey Wednesdays is seeking approval for this Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license. Everything passed fine through our department. The police department didn't have an issue. Finance and Personnel obviously approved it. They're taking over Hank and Hannah's. They're going to be located at 16 South Main Street. So yeah, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't be approved.
Travis, the owner is with us tonight. Anybody, any questions for Travis? If not, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would look for a motion approving the Class B intoxicating liquor and fermented malt beverage license for WT Entertainment. Alder Person Fulop and Alder Person Curly.
Motion by Alder Person Fulop, seconded by Alder Person Curly, approving a Class B intoxicating liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages license for WT Entertainment LLC DBA Whiskey Wednesdays.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Chairman Rosniak.
Next item, discussion and consideration approving the professional services agreement between the city of Hartford and Washington County for GIS services.
Yeah, I'll start with this one. So the city has always contracted out with a, with a organization and then after that, a gentleman from that organization to do GIS services, primarily mapping of specific items, assets, and things like that. Recently, we had reached out to Washington County, as I was familiar with them doing some GIS work for the city of West Bend. Prior to me being here, I was in West Bend and we transferred some of the responsibilities to them back then. And the recent, the city of West Bend recently lost their GIS person and was going to have all of their services moved to Washington County. And so it was a perfect opportunity for the both communities of West Bend and Hartford to work with Washington County to take over all GIS services. By going into a new agreement with Washington County, it not only saves us a little bit of money, about $11,628, but it also provides a little bit more service than what we were getting through the contracted service that we had prior to this with a Mr. Schmidt, Stephen Schmidt. So the recommendation of the staff is to approve the agreement with Washington County for the, again, a total savings of $11,628.03.
Jacob Moss is with us tonight. Any comments, Jacob?
Steve summed it up pretty well. Again, our cost pretty much is the $4,000 for the licensing of the GIS software, which is on our responsibility.
Pretty good deal.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Not. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Would look for a motion to approve. Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Savage, approving the professional services agreement between the city of Hartford and Washington County for GIS services.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you.
Never mind. Item three, discussion and consideration approving the intermunicipal agreement between the city of Hartford and the town of Aron. Steve or Jacob, who's taking this?
So we had, I'll start with it. And the situation is we had an agreement, intergovernment agreement with the town of Aron, and it was primarily in two areas. One had to do with zoning and future growth of the city. Back 20 years ago, we probably thought, well, there's no way we'll ever touch Aron. Well, we are getting closer over the last 20 years. And the second one really has to do more with fire service agreement. And so we reviewed this along, Chief is here along with our city planner. We reviewed the 20-year agreement with the town of Aron, made some requests to change. Some of the big things that we pulled back on it, again, includes how we base the charge increase with the township for our fire agreement. And again, that will be based on CPIU, the Consumer Price Index, which is the same as we do with the town of Hartford. And will eventually be the way that we do it with the town of Rubicon so that all three of them are the same. This does not increase or decrease. Currently, we do it based on increase or decrease in assessed values. Also, we talked about, the agreement, original agreement talked about running utilities to the township. We've pulled that out as running a sewer line to the township would only be done on a case-by-case basis. That again, makes financial sense for us to do. It's not just based on a request to do that because as you know very well from our previous extension of sewer, it's a very expensive venture. Also, it was decided that from both parties that if a firehouse would have to be put into the township to better serve their area, that we would, that they would pay for the construction of said firehouse, and then we'd simply occupy that house. The next item is that we both agreed that the township would receive outside money from the county or the federal government for the purpose of expanding fire and EMS services, which we're hearing a lot more about. That money would go directly to us versus the township being able to hold on to that. And finally, future road right-of-ways within the township, a budding county or state highways, was addressed for future needs based on how standards are today. I'll turn it over to Jacob if he's got anything.
One of the good parts of this thing is it stops the town of Aron from incorporating. So that way, we don't have to worry about a situation like Mayville where the town of Williamsport incorporated and they became an island and they could not expand or annex any territory. So we are preserving our right in the future in case, in the next agreement, if we want to try to pursue the ability to annex land in town of Aron. In this one, we cannot. But again, they cannot incorporate, which would impact us more dramatically than allowing us to annex.
And Chief Burgard?
Nothing. Just looking to answer questions if you have any.
Go ahead.
If we did expand into one of their exist, or built stations, would we have the staff to be able to cover that? Or would we be needing to get more staff?
Good question. So as we stand today, no, we couldn't just occupy it immediately. It would definitely take adding of staff, some rearrangement to make that happen. You'd have to either find a building, build a building, or repurpose a building to make that work out, especially with the need for dorm rooms. So as today, no, but it would take some extra planning to put that in place.
We also think that the addition of fire station number two, which will come online in third quarter of 2026, will be actually an added benefit to those in the town of Aron because it's closer to the south. Any other questions? Alder Person Rosniak.
Looking at growth in the town of Aron or growth in Hartford, the magic boundary line used to be Waterford Road, Highway E to the east and Waterford to the, that still stays as our boundary?
Correct. That is still our boundary.
Okay, good. That protects us and protects them. So.
Correct.
It's both ways.
Any other questions regarding this? And also, the Finance and Personnel Committee did approve this unanimously.
Chairman Rosniak.
Any further comments? Any further questions? I was waiting for you to take over.
I would do that.
Yeah, right. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, approving the intermunicipal agreement between the city of Hartford and a town of Aron, we have Alder Person Curly and Alder Person Garza.
Motion by Alder Person Curly, seconded by Alder Person Garza, approving the intermunicipal agreement between the city of Hartford and town of Aron.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We have nothing in Public Works and Utilities. So we go right to resolutions. Item A, Resolution 3702, resolution of support for the Wisconsin Economic Development Vibrant Spaces Grant Program. And who is taking that? Is that our, oh, thank you very much.
I'll take that, Mr. Mayor.
Right ahead, Randy.
So the city, actually, the Vibrant Spaces Grant is a grant opportunity that Steve brought in front of us as department heads. I'm in the process of applying for a grant for West Side Park. Plan on putting in a seating shaded area that'll be adjacent to the playground that will also complement the new pickleball courts that'll be going in next year as well. And it'll also provide a space for younger families to be able to watch baseball from that area through the outfield fence. This grant is a matching grant. So I'll be applying for $38,000 worth of grants, which the city would also have to cover the other $38,000. Our half will come from donations in park funds.
That's a lot of pickles.
A lot of pickles.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns for staff? Alder Person Rosniak.
Randy, that's pretty much a low area. Is that a problem with building anything on, I don't call it wetlands, but it's low.
So as long as we are avoiding permanent structures, which we wouldn't have, we'd have movable tables, movable benches. I'll have to have discussions about a shade structure because obviously that would be permanent with posts. But I'm working with Jacob on that to make sure we're within state guidelines.
With pickleball court, I think it's Brian lands. Just saying.
Brian lands?
Brian, yeah.
Okay. That's a feeble attempt.
That's a dad joke. Okay, Alder Person Fulop. So Randy, I've seen him down in the other park with tennis courts playing pickleball. Seems to be a large volume of people there at any given time. Does this new park allow for parking for that arrangement given that we're going to shift that activity over to there?
Will have more opportunities for convenient parking. There is a small parking lot in West Side Park. There's close street parking in Brian Rhodes, close your ears. And the utility parking lot is right across the street as well. Mainly, that'll be utilized after work hours as well.
Can they park on that street?
They can park on Grant Street as well, yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
When there's a Hartford Hawks baseball game, especially with the, they probably had 200 cars parked every, every street you could ever imagine. So there's plenty of room down there. Plenty of room.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I would look for a motion to move this forward. Alder Person Fulop and Alder Person Kohler.
Motion by Alder Person Fulop, seconded by Alder Person Kohler, for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3702.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item B, Resolution 3703, a resolution authorizing the sale of city property known as 1320 County Road U. The tax parcel number, get your pencils out, is 36-1702001005. And with that, we have Brian Rhodes to discuss this with. Brian, go ahead.
Good evening. So at the last common council meeting, we approved the sale of two utility properties. One was the well 13 property on the east side of Hartford, just north of the Hartford Gun Club. And the other was the sale of the airport road substation property, which is on the west side of Hartford, just north of the Bronutown plant or just south of Cleveland Avenue. So tonight, the two resolutions are just a formal procedure just to approve the sale of the properties. So the resolution approves the term of the offer to purchase. It also authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to sign the deed and any other documents to finalize the sale. And then it authorizes the city administrator to sign the closing statement and any other affidavits for the city.
Any questions for Brian? Hearing none. Would look for a motion. Alder Person Turchi, Alder Person Regan.
Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Regan, for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3703.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item, letter C, Resolution 3704. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of city property known as tax parcel. Got your pencils again. 36-1403001001. Do we have a map for this?
Uh, hold on. I do not. Brian would be glad to, to explain to where that is.
You think it's from here, Brian?
The, so the first property we discussed was the airport road substation property. The second one is the well 13 property, which is just north of the gun club, just south of the railroad tracks. It's a triangular property, 15.71 acres nestled in between the two properties there.
Okay. So we've actually talked about this already?
Yes, at the last council meeting.
Exactly. Just wanted to make sure because the description wasn't in there and I wanted to let our vast viewing audience be aware of what we're looking to sell. Okay. With that, any discussion from council? Any questions for Brian? Hearing none. All those, or no, actually, let's go and get, get somebody to move it. Move it. Regan, second. Savage?
Motion by Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Savage, for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3704.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Super. Thank you very much. We have ordinances, no first or second readings, and we go directly to our city administrator's report with Steve Vogart.
Okay, the next thing, item on our agenda is the conceptual plat review for Home Path Financial Limited Partnership. I won't, I won't read all the tax key numbers, but I will turn it over to our city planner, Jacob Moss, to tell you more about this project.
All right. Home Path Financial Limited Partnership is looking to develop 101 single-family units at Zern Farms, which is just west of the Waukesha, or the Washington County Golf Course. Steve is pulling up a map right here. So this is...
Which one do you want?
Either one. Start with the first one. Yep, and then slideshow it. So this is a general area. You can see the golf course very easily by the distinctive characteristics of a golf course. It's a little red line. It goes north and south. It's a strip of land. That is the proposed Zern Farm. Next slide. So these are the parcels that would make up Zern Farm. There's five parcels altogether, three of which are already in the city. Next slide. And these are the two parcels that are in the town of Hartford. The owner who, who wants to, the owner of the Zern Farm properties currently does not want to annex in until they kind of have a, a firm grasp on the city's willingness to move forward with this subdivision. Upon that understanding with the developer and the city wanting to move this forward, they'll look to annex those two parcels in. So this is the subdivision itself, again, 101 units. There are only two access points and they're separated. There's extensive flood plains and wetlands on this property. And unfortunately, the wetlands in this case are most likely under the Army Corps of Engineer supervision. So they're going to have to do a jurisdictional determination with the Army Corps, which can take a long time. But you just don't want to mess with Army Corps wetlands. So it's why there's only one exit to the south and one exit to the north. The first access drive or accesses off the Mount Vernon Drive, which is part of the Mount Vernon subdivision, which is in the city. And then the next one in is Logan Road on the north end, which goes into a town subdivision. So we will have to work with, we know we're probably going to get concern about traffic coming in and out, especially on Mount Vernon, onto, onto, I don't think that's Union, but down onto.
Hilldale.
Hilldale, thank you. So we, we want to address those issues when it comes up to that. But again, 101, the size varies from 8,001 square feet for the minimum lot size to, to up to 22,736 square feet, our half acre lot. The density here is about 4.1 dwelling units per acre, which meets the comprehensive plan. When you look at it in the entirety of the entire acreage of the parcel, it comes down to 1.58 dwelling units on this, on this subdivision. So it's going to be a great subdivision. It's going to have, just because of the way that the environmental factors impact it, you have certain lot sizes that are going to be smaller on this one. But again, these are, this is, they're not looking to go into any type of, any type of next generation type of housing. This is more higher-end market rate type of subdivision that they're looking to build here. And some of these lots will have exceptional views.
When you say higher end, what are you?
Go ahead, Alder Person Curly.
Oh, I'm sorry. What are you looking at? Price range?
By their estimate, over half a million dollars, around 650 on some of these.
So low income.
Yes.
What are the size of the lots? I mean, are they half acre lots? Are they smaller? Are they bigger?
The smallest ones, it's kind of in that tiny strip that, in that circle area, that's about the 8,001 where that kind of loops around. That's about 0.18 acres or point, yeah, 1, 0.18 acres. And then the largest ones are about 0.52 or half an acre. So it's, it's a mixed size on the parcels. But again, to get, to get what, how that land is contoured and how that land is environmentally impacted. impacted by flood plain and wetlands, they will, they had to take advantage to get the number of dwelling units that maximized their profits, but also maximized our tax revenue as well.
What did our planning commission think of this when they looked at it?
Again, this was a conceptual plat, so there was no action taken on this one, and you'll not be taking action tonight. But the general vibe was, it was a positive feel towards this subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions for staff?
Oh, nothing else?
That's it.
No other questions? All right, Mayor?
Thank you very much. For adjournments, and again, a very happy Thanksgiving to all the citizens' families. The, good Lord's blessings on, on all of the folks here and stay safe. For adjournment, Alder Person Fulop, Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Fulop, seconded by Alder Person Savage, to adjourn at seven thirty-one P. M.
For adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.